The date, time, place thereof posted on the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of this notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Okay, so today we're gonna go to the privileges session first, so anything to read? Oh, it's in the back.
I got it. You want me to take care of it? Yeah. Okay, in accordance with NJSA Section 10:4-2, the Edison County Department of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purposes of legal matters, confidential board matters, personnel. I think that's it.
That's it.
And that's it. Thank you.
Motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll be back in about a half an hour, forty-five minutes.
Was it Joe on the second, right?
Yes, Joe, yes. You guys had a chance to tour the facility while we're having our closed session over there, and I say forty-five minutes, we're right on time. Okay, so can I have a motion to reconvene to the open session?
Motion.
Okay, and do I have a second? Okay, Mrs. White, Mr. Romano, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so today one of the agenda item is to have a public hearing on the budget again, so now I'm open up for public comments on the budget only, on a budget only, public comments. Yeah, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. I hope everybody as well.
Your name?
Oh, my name is Brian Rivera.
Thank you.
And I live in Edison.
Can you make it louder? Yeah, it's just words enough. Yeah, say something.
You guys hear me?
Oh, that's good.
All right. That's good, because I got a few things to say. I did kind of prepare something while I was sitting outside, so I really want to talk about this budget. So while the budget may cover next year's immediate needs, responsible fiscal planning involves preparing for the future uncertainties, something a modest tax increase could help address. I don't think that taking twenty-two million out of our capital, leaving the district with a little over than a million, is the right way to go. The zero increase budget might feel good now, but it risks underfunding key initiatives or deferring maintenances that leads to higher long-term costs. Failing the plan ahead could force the district into steeper tax increases or budget cuts later, something far more disruptive to both students and taxpayers, and I'm talking about that bank cap. My main concern is our students, the effects of this budget on our students' experiences and their achievement. Speaking from experience, I have personally seen how a budget can drive or affect student If the district doesn't grow its revenue base, students could face less personalized instruction, fewer academic or extracurricular options, delayed upgrades to technology facilities, less support for vulnerable learners, and overall decline in morale and engagement, not just for our students but also our staff. As I said, I've experienced this for the last couple of years. So with that said, I have six questions. And with this said, I'm going to direct these questions to the educator that sits on the dais. How will student services be preserved or expanded without new revenue? What's the plan for rising costs? Without new revenue, how will the district cover these increases without affecting students? How will the district invest in academic recovery and achievement? Can these programs be sustained or expanded with flat funding? Will facilities and learning environments be affected or neglected by this as well? A five-year tax freeze might sound good for the wallets, but without increased investment, we risk cutting corners on what matters most, and that's our students' success. We need a budget that ensures equity, academic growth, and a safe, well-equipped learning environments for every child in this district. I hope the board considers my comments. Thank you.
Okay, is there other comments? Any other comments from public?
You want to address some of that? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Rivera, what was the question regarding revenue again? I'm sorry, the question regarding revenue? I don't write that fast, I'm not going to pretend to try and write six.
So my first question was how will student services be preserved or expanded without new revenue?
Right, so I.
Because we have that whole strategic plan where that had a whole budget.
So I think you'll see in our presentation where the original services and programs that we've been offering are still in place. We didn't cut any principals' budget, nor did we cut any supervisors' budget. In terms of expanding new programs, I think part of that wonderful PowerPoint that Ms. Daniels put through speaks to some of the new academies that we're going to be having, right? New opportunities for all of our students here in Edison. In terms of new revenue, we, there is no new revenue, right? We actually had a reduction in state aid, but we were able to use some of our fund balance, which was about sixteen, sixteen million?
Sixteen point nine.
Right, sixteen point nine, thank you, Mr. Shi. This is double from the previous year or any year, so that's, that's a really huge accomplishment that we were able to do that. And as to the capital reserve, right, those are things that we've been able to restrict and put into legally funded reserves and use them for, you know, the property, plant, and equipment of the district, which we've been doing, and we continue to do, because investment in infrastructure is important. We, the budget covered contractual raise, raises along with increases in healthcare costs. We did even add busing to hopefully have some additional courtesy routes. Is it as many as I would have liked? Am I adding, you know, twenty-five new buses, right? No, but there was some in there. We're just not doing a lot of discretionary things that we once might have done.
So. And then I could probably answer some of the other pieces in relationship to that. I think the overarching question was how are student programs going to be affected, right? If we were to kind of summarize some of those particular pieces. So currently, there are no programs that are currently being cut, reduced, we did not touch class size. You know, we took a deep dive into the budget and looked at a couple of different things. Number one, we looked at our digital content providers as well, too, both chief academic officers as well as Dr. Tuie, looked at some of our digital content that we have access to but may not have reflected the usage that we would have liked, right? So we are prioritizing what type of content we're going to be utilizing and look for any redundancies and overlap there. Nothing's been eliminated, like Mr. Toth said, principal budgets, school-based budgets are not. I know they, you know, they may hear, we did, we did move away from printers, right? That's usually ones that we get all the time, too, about.
Yeah, we have moved away from printers, the desktop-type printers, and instead we're utilizing the, you know, the printer copier fax, like a printing center at various locations throughout the building. We're cutting back on toner and things of that nature.
Definitely a change for staff, and I often don't like the practice as well. I love having my own printer in my office, too, but from a financial standpoint, it's definitely more cost-effective in relationship to toner, the lease payments that we have as well as the ability to regulate those. Plan for rising costs? Yeah, I mean, that's a good question, right? You know, you look at, you know, hopefully, you know, it's contingent upon the economy, right? One of the things that we know are fixed costs, right? That's kind of how you plan your school budget. It is based off of fixed costs of teacher salaries, right? So if you're looking at a three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-million-dollar budget, two-hundred-million of that is salaries, another fifty-million of that is healthcare costs. So there's very little discretionary when it kind of comes to the areas where we can, we can play around with, and therefore, for as far as rising costs are concerned, you know, that's, you can't plan for what you don't know, right? Is that fair?
I think that's accurate, and if you look at it, the budget's a moving target, it really is, because that's exactly what it is. It's a budget, right? The minute the board approves a budget, three months from now, you know, there could be, you know, a financial calamity, right? And you have to be able to take action, right? And whether that be through raising revenue somehow or reducing your expenditures, that's why we have the professionals in place like myself, Dr. Alderelli, and the business office staff in place, is to be able to do that, to be able to, you know, meet those challenges, which we've done time and time again. We've, this board has kept the pre-K program operating when the state didn't give us the, our grant, which I feel like we're more than entitled to. We've still, the board made it a commitment to service those kids, and we've continued to do so.
Yeah, and I think one of the key pieces, though, is the sixteen-point-nine-million dollars in unassigned fund balance that.
Yeah.
Was utilized this year, which will not be, you know, won't be available next year, so it will be a different conversation that we need to talk about at that time. But as far as this year, no programs are currently getting cut. We are ensuring access to all clubs, sporting programs, resources for teachers, we're actually expanding resources for teachers as well, too. Our engagement platform, I would say that it's a pretty comprehensive budget, and I think the people that worked on it did a really good job.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue, Edison. Just a question, because I haven't been able to see, you know, like the complete budget just for presentation. It's great that, like, in the presentation, we said about, like, all this new building and stuff that, yes, we do need. How much money is allotted in this budget to cover what we already have, like maintaining our buildings, if we should have things like boilers breaking, air conditioners breaking, you know, in schools and stuff? How much, is there, like, a contingency in the budget for that, and is it, you know, what we've had in the past so that we can cover, you know, like, whoopsies, like even hearing, you know, a couple meetings ago about, you know, that even the tennis courts at J.P. Stephen, stuff that we don't plan that happens? Where is that built into the budget, and how much is it, is it comparable to what we've had in the past, or is that pot diminishing because money's going elsewhere? Thank you.
Good question. Yeah, sure. So in terms of, like, you know, boilers and general maintenance and things of that nature, we do a report, which actually kicks off the budget season, every school district does it across the state of New Jersey, it's called the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, an M1, that dictates basically what you're supposed to budget for the general maintenance of your PP, your plant, plant and equipment. If I look at our budget, what comes in under Mr. Colubus is probably for those type of things about four million dollars ballpark, that's off the top of my head, I'm not looking at the line, but that's everything from, you know, servicing those type of things, boilers and other mechanical units, HVAC, so that they're, they're in good operating order, so we don't have things, you know, just breaking down at random, right? If you do the preventative maintenance, much like, you know, we all, hopefully we all have, like, a car or motorcycle, whatever, you know, you change the oil on it, right? Every, whatever, you know, five thousand miles, whatever it is, three thousand miles, if you don't do that, you're going to have problems with your engine. So that's, that's one of the steps. In the event that something does happen, right, like, you know, we have some type of issue where a boiler goes, we can, you know, obviously at that point in time, because we have an emergent circumstance, board could pass a resolution requesting the executive county superintendent of schools to allow us a withdrawal from our, one of our reserves, one being capital, two being maintenance, or three being our emergency. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? See, none, can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion to close.
Do you have a second? You already spoke.
You already spoke.
Okay, go ahead.
Dr., this was a hearing, so, sorry. So, I apologize, but based on the conversation, we talked about how we kept programs in order. You mentioned pre-K. So are we having, I believe, what do we have, five-hundred-and-thirty-one kids that were in pre-K this year, I believe somewhere there? So my first question is, how many kids are going to be in the program next year? Are we funding five-hundred-and-thirty-one? Because if not, then that affected the program, that's a program change, so that means students and academics were affected there. The second thing I want to talk about was the sixteen million. I wasn't going to bring it up, since you brought it up. Now, was this sixteen million that you had overbudgeted? Or was this sixteen million that you did not spend on stuff to get that sixteen million? Because I have an issue with that, because Eddie, you did just say that that sixteen million ain't going to be there next year. So sixteen million that you're using to cover this year's budget, you're not covering it next year, so you just lost sixteen million there. The other thing, too, is Beth brought up issues with, God forbid, something happens, and she asked what the number was, we didn't hear a number, but from my understanding in capital, we had somewhere about twenty-four million, somewhere around there. Now we're taking twenty-two million out of that to fund this current budget, which we won't have next year either. So next year, we won't have sixteen million or twenty-two million, if I'm correct, and there's also chances of aid being lost again, because from my understanding, when I spoke to my superintendent friends and business administrator friends, they feel like there's going to be, the belt is going to get real tight next year as well. And I'm sure Eddie, in the meetings that you go to, they're saying the same thing. So again, I'm not trying to bash the hard work that you guys do, is, I'm worried about these kids, and especially my kid, who's going to be in this district for the next nine years, you know, and I'm sure every parent in this town is worried about, hey, are we going to have these services that my kids are used to having now? Are we going to have them next year? So I'm not trying to pick a fight with anybody, I just want people to hear my opinion and hear what I've experienced, because it was a bad, you guys hired a bunch of people from my district that lost their jobs. You know what I mean? You're smiling about it, because you know I'm right, and I'm afraid that these issues will happen here, and it'll definitely affect our kids. So those were my, my questions.
Sure.
So, the sixteen-point-nine million, the fund balance, that was, that was generated not from one year but from multiple years, and it, back in, when did it was COVID, 2020? At some point during 2020 or 2021, state legislature allowed you to have an unassigned fund balance of four percent, right? That's what they allowed you to reserve, so to speak. So that's been carried all the way up until, for I believe, like, two or two and a half, maybe three years, and in 2024, you know, after the audit was complete, you were forced to budget that money. So when the 2024 was, audit was complete, those, that fund balance is automatically appropriated into a subsequent year's budget. Well, it's not going to be twenty-five, because twenty-five is happening, so it goes to twenty-six. So it wasn't just from one year, it was from generated underspending through a lot of those COVID times, right, where maybe you weren't spending as much on, you know, obviously on field trips or transportation and things of that nature. In the future, will we have that type of number? Probably not, but I hope to have at least half of it, right? Because the idea is, though, even with a budget, you may have a budget, you try and want to, you know, spend as wisely as possible, so that, you know, you don't spend exactly everything you have. We're fortunate enough that we've been able to do things like that, where, you know, things that we may have budgeted construction for twenty million dollars or, you know, thirty million dollars comes back at, you know, from bid at twenty-three, and there's a savings. So we're able to realize things like that. In terms of the different reserves and numbers, I couldn't give you those exactly off the top of my head, I want to say a couple million dollars, maybe two left in cap after this withdrawal, maintenance, probably another two, emergency, one, so maybe around five all in, that's off the top of my head. But don't forget, you know, not to forget, or I should, more to say is to tell you guys is that, once we commence 2025 and we go through the audit, we'll probably, more than likely, put another deposit back into the capital reserve, because that's normally what we do. So, you know, we're always, you know, and the amounts vary from time to time, but we're always putting, trying to put money back into that reserve for, you know, things like now, that we're going to be doing infrastructure projects or capital projects without utilizing our current expense funding. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? See, none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, Ralph and Ronik Patel, I'm sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
I can make a move.
Yes, so, yeah, we're gonna go and do this. Yeah, yes, can I have a motion to approve the budget resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, you can go, yeah, go ahead, make a comment, yes.
Usually after the.
On the motion?
No, no, on the budget.
On the budget.
Okay, yeah, let him make a comment.
Let him do a motion in a second, and then we'll.
Yeah, after the motion and it's passed.
No, no.
So Ronik.
I second.
Okay, same, Ralph and Ronik Patel, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Comment.
Yes.
The budget. I've been accused of not being a senior citizen. I am, I'm seventy-two. Number two, I think a budget is an outline of what we propose for the following year. I have, I have concerns about our students. Now, our students demand a lot from our administration, and we demand a lot from our students. See, our students are what this board talks about a lot. So I want the students to get everything that they need, special ed, trips, education. When I first got on a board a long time ago, I learned something about, you have to, you teach kids to read, and then they read to learn, and I want to make sure that the budget is an outline of our strategic plan. I want to make sure that we have enough, and all I'm hearing is about zero and about, and I can't, I can't agree with that. I want to make sure our students, the parents of our students, know that we have their back. You know, every time I turn around, there's a parent talking to me, and what they're saying is, is that when I'm not around anymore, my student has to have, has to have everything that they need to succeed in life, and I'm not asking for the world, I'm just asking for some consideration. We lost two-point-six million. There's other districts in New Jersey that are closing schools. I think one of them is closing two elementary schools. There's districts down here in South, what is it, East Brunswick, they had a big issue. I don't think, as being a taxpayer and being a senior citizen, which I was accused of being, which, thank you, I don't think zero's the way to go. The kids that come to our school to learn, they learn to read and then they read to learn, I really think our teachers are doing a great job, and I understand, but I think a budget is just an outline of where we're going. So at this time, I'll reserve, but I don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member have any comments? Yeah, Ginny.
I do. Okay. I'm deeply concerned and troubled, and I have this to say. As one of the two senior citizens sitting here today, I strongly disagree with the idea that raising school budget by more than zero percent is an attack on seniors or taxpayers. When I was first elected during the pandemic, we promised zero percent increase because families were struggling, and for four years, we honored that promise, largely thanks to the generous state aid that we have received. But today, we're in a very different situation, our state aid has been drastically cut, we're receiving millions less than before. On top of that, we couldn't secure grant funding for the new preschool program and are now forced to use twenty-two million of our surplus, leaving us vulnerable. A major emergency like the James Monroe fire that happened ten years ago could devastate us. Federal support is also uncertain, especially with the Department of Education in danger of no longer existing. We may even lose more funding, such as Title I, God forbid. Let's be clear, we promised zero percent then, not forever. We've prioritized our taxpayers for four years. Now it's time to put our students and staff first. A modest increase of at least one percent is not irresponsible, it's necessary. Districts of all sizes are suffering. They're not just cutting programs that are good for our kid, for their kids and our kids as well, but they're firing teachers and support staff, we can't let that happen, and that's why I'm going to be a no vote on this budget. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Any other board member?
Yeah, can I make a comment?
Yes.
First, I want to apologize that I missed the meeting last week, because I had a family commitment, but if I knew that the budget might be involved down, and we're risking to shut down the school, I would definitely leave everything behind and come here. What I don't understand is, you know, we have sent this budget for county last month, right, in March. No question was asked among the board, Eddie and John did a very good job explaining everything to us, everything was clear, no question was asked, the first time, everybody agreed on it, that's why it was sent with full board agreement to the county for approval. So what I don't understand is, you know, why, and this is the fifth time we are having a zero budget, zero-dollar school tax increase, fifth year. No question was asked for the first four years. We are all, you know, the senior citizen has been senior citizen four years ago, parents has been parents four years ago, we have students programmed four years ago, nothing was changed, no question was asked, but why now? That's why I'm confused, okay? If you say this is not political, I don't find any other solution, answer to this question. But either way, I appreciate the hard work of the administration that we are having a zero-dollar school tax increase, I'm grateful as a taxpayer in this town, and I think the board is doing a great job for the taxpayers, we're being physically responsible for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you, President Shi. Just a question for our BA, Mr. Toth, you said we have five million in reserve, roughly, roughly? Is that true? Okay, is there a recommended amount that we should have? So, there is, there is no recommended amount. The maximum you could have in an emergency reserve is a million dollars, the maximum you could have in your maintenance reserve is, I believe, what is dictated on your CMP, your Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, and your capital reserve, you can't have no more than the value of your long-range facilities plan, which you could never save that much money any which way, because it would be, like, over hundreds of millions of dollars. Right, okay, all right, thank you for that. Also, this would be a fifth year, meaning we did go four years prior to this without a. a, without an increase. But considering the banked capital, what is the allowable increase that could happen when the increases, when the increases have to kick in? What would be the allowable maximum that the district can go up to?
So you're talking about, assuming that you're saying next year with our bank cap, what would be the, what would be the max we can generate?
Yes, the max.
All right, I believe off the top of my head, I think next year you'd be able to generate twenty-eight million dollars through bank cap, yes.
What percentage is that?
Wow, I'm sorry, what is that?
Eight percent.
Eight percent, yeah.
Eight percent, okay. And I know you and Dr. Alderelli had spent a lot of time, you know, going back and forth with the budget and I'm sure have scrutinized it, turned it upside down on its head, looked at it in twenty-seven different ways. Your conclusion of that, what would have been your recommendation after, because I believe your, your office is going to be scrutinizing it more heavily than anybody else? Was zero your recommendation?
We, we built the budget initially to zero, yes, but we did look at what, two and four percent? Correct. The- Yeah, we looked at the varying options. On the overall piece. But we built it to zero. I forget the process, forgive me if it's, if it's out of order, but then we went to the finance committee with those, with those particular pieces and- Correct. And discussed, you know, the, the different options, right? Whether we went to zero, I believe zero, one, two, three, four percent. We looked at those items, you know. We still, I think one of the things that we came out of finance was that we'd be able to accomplish what we've been doing and maybe not grow our programs, you know, as greatly, but still grow our programs and still offer, you know, a flat tax to the taxpayer. I, I think that was the way to forge ahead, right? To still, you know, deliver, you know, what you've been giving students and a little bit more while also taking into consideration the local taxpayer.
Right. You know, because I ask these questions because as a board member, I'm, I'm looking right here at, at the code of ethics for board members. And I'm, I'm a taxpayer as well.
Yes, you are.
And to see, to see a fifth year of zero percent, that's a great reprieve for taxpayers, absolutely, I'm not, I'm not doubting that. However, you look at the code of ethics for board members, it doesn't mention the taxpayer at all. It's, you know, we're ethically bound to do what's best for the district, not necessarily the taxpayer. Now, of course, we want to keep it as low as we can for taxpayers and I thought four years in a row was fantastic. However, then, you know, but to board member Peng's comment, yeah, yeah, right, it was voted to be sent off. However, in hindsight, for me, that wasn't perfect information. What I've learned since then has actually made me to reverse my course. That, that, that's why, so, but, but thank you for answering the questions.
Any other board members? Yes, Ralph.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. First of all, I gotta take issue with Ms. White. Two senior citizens on the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
I know, I'm a newly senior citizen.
I thought you were a kid.
Yeah.
You look young, you look young.
I look, I mean, I don't look like I'm not a senior.
So you should feel good.
Actually, let the gray hair, the gray hair grow back in maybe.
Exactly, how old are you, old man?
I will be sixty-six.
That isn't even, come on now.
Thank you. All right, a couple of things. Zero tax increase, I think we're in worse off situation now as far as taxpayers go than when COVID was here, okay? Look at what's happening around the world. Either you agree with the politics or not agree with the politics. I was just telling Ms. White, I was talking to a young lady today, she buys makeup for thirty bucks from Amazon, it's up to sixty, sixty-five dollars now because of what's going on. So if we could help the taxpayer, I don't see why we wouldn't. I, I keep hearing from the public that we should be, as board members, we should listen to the administration. Well, this is what the administration presented. This is what they said, there'll be no cuts, not one, not one penny out of their school budgets, nothing. So you can't speak out both sides of your mouth. You can't say, hey, listen to the administration in one case and then now we're not going to listen to the administration. All right, I don't get that. We may not be able to do a zero for the sixth year, I don't know. I don't know what the future holds. I'm not worried about the future right now, all right? I'm worried about now, okay? Our kids are getting what they need now. That's all that counts. Next year, they will get what they need. It may, we may have to do a two percent tax increase, I don't know. I don't know what next year will bring, okay? So I think helping the taxpayers now, making sure our kids get what exactly they need currently and like Mr. Toth and Dr. Alderelli said, we're expanding programs a little bit, okay? And as far as the district, the taxpayers are part of the district, by the way. I mean, it may not say taxpayers in the code of ethics, but taxpayers are part of the district. That's who funds the district, okay? So we need to have their support too. So I will be a yes on this vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board member comments? Okay. So let me just say a couple of words. So Brian, you were on the school board last year. So you know, there's a budget, there's a budget, excuse me, there's a budget that, that we budgeted for JMI. What happened to JMI? We didn't do it. Excuse me, Brian, Brian.
I just made a question, I'll give you an answer.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Tell me stop moving out.
There is, there is a JMI, JMI school was budgeted for sixteen million dollars, we didn't spend the money, the tax has already been collected. We already collect the money for JMI. So we didn't use it, what do we do? We'll put it in this year. So what, you know, you're suggesting us to, to just put it in the bank and, and, you know, occur interest on, on the sixteen, fifteen million dollars? Excuse me. You are, you are, you are administrator, okay? So be, behave yourself and I hope your students is not going to embarrass what you're doing here, okay? I'm gonna give you one warning. I'm gonna give you one warning, okay? If you continue to do this, if you continue to do this, I'm gonna let you out.
I'm out.
Okay.
All right, can we make a motion to pass?
I have six minutes, bro.
You had, you had nine minutes already, okay? So we collected sixteen million dollars last year for JMI. We did not use the money. What do we do with the money? We put it in this year. And, and, you know, Mr. Toth also mentioned, there are regulations, how much you can put it in. Best to answer your questions, you know, if, if we have emergencies, we have reserve to handle all of that. And also you mentioned about, you know, the Monroe school got burned down, that's why we have a risk insurance to cover that, right? So all of this has been taken care of. Let's remember, the entire budget went up eleven million dollars. The whole budget went up eleven million, although the tax portion was the same, the budget went up eleven million dollars. That's total spend we have. Although we, we, we had a two-point-eight million dollar loss from the state aid, but we still got millions and millions from the state as well. Just compared to last year, we have two-point-eight million less. So that's the whole story, the budget went up eleven million dollars. Keep that in mind, the budget went up eleven million dollars. The budget is not the same. It did not stay the same. The budget has been going up every single year. That's why we can accommodate all those increases and salaries and also we can accommodate all those programs. So superintendent and, and our BA has answered these questions, there's no cut to the programs, no staff layoff, nothing. The budget went up eleven million dollars, thank you. Since we already have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Okay, do I have, do we?
I second.
You're all right, okay. So Roko, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo. Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
No.
Ms. White.
No.
Ms. Shannon Peng.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now let's move on. President comments. I'm just very appalled by what happened, you know, last meeting and people voting down on a zero tax increase budget. Meanwhile, the entire budget went up eleven million dollars. So that's all I have to say. So superintendent's report?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep my comments brief. We are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, right in the middle of it as well as Nurses Week. Thank you so much for all the dedicated professionals that spent our time where the most important pieces happen and that's in the classroom. So wishing all of you a wonderful week. I know our building level administrators and district administrators have great events planned for you. I know our PTAs and PTOs support those initiatives as well too, so congratulations and thank you for all you do. I do want to make one public service announcement as well, Mr. Shi. We did have our first meeting for our education foundation last week. It was really successful, a really great turnout, lots of excellent questions. We are planning another one in the month of, actually later on in, in May, maybe the early June, we haven't set the date yet. But anybody's that, that's interested in knowing a little bit more about how they can support the education foundation, whether they want to be a trustee from a leadership position or even just a volunteer that will support a particular event or initiative, any and all are welcome. We have information that is posted and listed on our website in relationship to this. We have an easily accessible QR code too, that you could sign up as well as the potential for, actually, not the potential, it is going to happen, an alumni portal in which if you are a former student from Edison Township and want to give back in any way, shape or form, you'll have the opportunity to do that too. So please check out our website if you're interested in volunteering in any way, shape or form and supporting the foundation.
Thank you. Now we move on. Today, the resolution we have is basically personnel, so we can open up for comments, public comments for resolutions only. So these are personnel agenda. All right, see none?
See none, close the portion, public portion.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now let's have a motion to approve the personnel agenda. Time of motion?
Motion.
Ms. Peng? Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Shannon and Ronak. Roko, please.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Mr. Ronak Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes, but I have to recuse myself from any known conflicts.
Noted. I got you. Ms. Peng.
Yes.
President Shi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we open up for public comments. Anything else? Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Before I open up the public comments, we have a new supervisor sitting here in the back with her parents, Wendy Sattler, and we just- We just met her, you know, right before the meeting and, you know, we wish her nothing but a very successful in our Edison School District. She is a grad, she was a graduate from Edison High, a local product and came back and teaching Edison School for fifteen years, if I remember correctly, fifteen years. And this is internal promotion and, you know, we'll look, we'll continue to promote within and we'll continue to hire locally as much as we can. So Wendy is another example of promoting within. So do you want to come over and say a couple of words, you know, just let people see you as our new supervisor for social study middle school?
Good evening, I just want to thank the entire board and Dr. Alderelli for all of their support and I'm excited to continue working with the students and the staff of Edison Public Schools, so thank you. Thank you.
So we just approved your appointment, so you're officially here, okay? Thank you. Congratulations. All right, now we open up for public comments. Any, any other items? Okay, Beth. Lady is first, Matt.
Beth Talke, Fifteen Midwood Avenue. Just wanted to bring up about activities going on in our schools next Friday, May ninth. It will be at Mason Gross, JP Stevens, fiftieth anniversary of their jazz extravaganza. Open to the public, free to everybody, believe it starts at six. I know they're moving it over to, you know, the Douglas Cook Campus just because we're still waiting for approval on JP Stevens auditorium, but please, alumni will be there. Our fabulous kids will show their talents there, so please, for anybody who couldn't attend, please do, it's a fabulous night. Thank you. And it's free to the public.
Thank you. Matt?
Good evening, Matt Revnack, ETA president. So first of all, again, to jump on Dr. Alderelli's statement, today's actually Teacher Appreciation Day and tomorrow's National Nurses, School Nurses Appreciation. So again, you know, thanks to everybody that, the great service they do for the Edison School District. As I sent out myself an email and I thank you for sending out your letter today, I know I'm proud to be the president of such fine people. Second thing, I also want to congratulate Wendy, great choice. She's done a great job in, as an interim. In fact, we have Shannon, the previous supervisor, sitting in the audience as well. So very happy for Wendy and good luck Wendy, it'll be great working with you. Number three I want to mention, also we have in the audience Nancy Benos. Nancy was a recipient of the ETEA Support Professional of the Year. It's a little different than- It's a little bit different from the schools support professional, which is things like non-teachers basically that are professionals, guidance counselors, certified nurse, et cetera. We started this years ago because NJA runs it, she will now go to the county for NJA for our non-certificated groups, power professionals, RNs, LPNs, armed security guards, regular security guards, et cetera. So, you know, again, it's a great honor, we had some great people that were nominated and Nancy stood out above the rest. So again, congratulations to Nancy. The final thing, I didn't speak before the budget because I knew it wasn't going to make a difference anyway and I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. I did speak up, I made a speech before it went to the county, okay? And I did say and recommend it again, the one percent, which would have basically covered our reduction in state aid. And as I sat here, it was, I was a little disturbed and again, you guys have all my respect, awesome, but I understand your responses, but there's a few things to point out. Jonathan mentioned about, for example, we don't know what's going to happen in three months. Heck, we know what's going on right now with the rising prices for everything, who knows what's going to happen in three months? The way you prepare though for catastrophes is in advance, not when a catastrophe happens. That's why we have car insurance, homeowners insurance, okay, medical insurance. So when those medical situations come up, that car accident comes up, you're not devastated and you're not wiped out. So you're paying upfront to guarantee something that when that does happen, you're not going to become bankrupted by it. I also thought about as I'm sitting in the audience was our pension system. Times were great back then. Christie Whitman was governor, started rating the pension system, okay? Then there were also givebacks on NJA's part, which I've spoken up against. They had the drop in the denominator. Some districts elected, if you recall, the five-year buyout. Things were great, stock market was great, their investments were great, pension system was great. What happened ten years later? Boom. And since then, it's been nothing but a struggle, okay? Unfortunately, the district can't take out an insurance policy for these things. The only way to do something like that is to prepare in advance, okay? So I understand, listen, it's great, I understand again, helping the taxpayer, I'm a taxpayer too in my town, I don't live in Edison, you know, none of us like to see our, our taxes go up, but like my vice president just said in the office, it's zero budget, you're already behind because of the rate of inflation. Prices are going up, okay? And again, I understand, like Mr. Eriko mentioned with the prices, during the pandemic, everybody agreed, people were out of jobs, people weren't working, et cetera. But that's in the past now. You know, we don't know what's going to happen and when you don't go to the money that you can get, and again, the compounding part of that comes into play as well, it's a tough, tough decision to make. It's a tough, tough decision to make. Hell, if they told me my taxes weren't going to be raised for five years, I'd probably be jumping for joy. On the other hand, I will say, you know, we don't always agree on everything. But I do agree with Mr. Rivera, like, how do you continue to pay for programs when you're not getting funding? And to say the budget was raised $11 million, that's great. But we lost state funding. You're taking the money from elsewhere to pay for it, is what it comes down to. Which means that money that's in reserve isn't there anymore. And I think that is the point that he's trying to make. So I'm hoping that, you know, none of us have a crystal ball and can predict what happens. I'm hoping that this does not come back to devastate us. We got hit big time about 15 years ago with this. But we did have massive staff cuts. Our power professionals took a 25% hit on their salaries. Programs were cut. I don't want to see that happen again. So, you know, I hope next year, things, you give a little more consideration to things like that. Obviously, it's done for this year. And I hope we don't have any major catastrophes come up over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, Sue.
Sue Campione, HFF Court in Edison. I just wanted on behalf of her Woodrow family to congratulate Wendy on her well-deserved promotion. I work in the guidance department and see the respect that the staff and administrators have for her and the great job she's done over the last year. And I'm glad to see that she got the promotion and wanted to congratulate her officially.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, Brian, third time.
Hopefully I get some questions answered. So I only have just one question, basically. Last week, the last meeting, I had some concerns in regards to our appointment of the risk manager. We've read some concerns, some emails. I'm curious where we are, Dr. Alderelli, in regards to some of these emails or possibly allegations and what the school district or central office is going to do in regards to following up to make sure everything was kosher. Just follow up on that. Thank you.
You want to say something?
Yes. So we are currently reviewing those, those pieces. But what we did find out is that a lot of that information that you referenced was part of a contract as well too at the time that was signed in 2021, I believe.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, other public comments?
Motion to close, public comment?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Ralph and Ronik. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now let's open up for board member comments. Any other board members?
Mr. Shi?
Okay.
Ladies, seniors in the first. What a gentleman.
I just wanted to say congratulations, teachers and nurses. Our nurses, you know how I love our nurses. You know, have a great special day, both of you.
Okay, Ralph, thank you.
I'd like to also, you know, thank the teachers and the entire staff, power professionals, nurses, bus drivers, everyone. Also, I attended a function at Ben Franklin last week, I believe it was, Dr. Alderelli, right? It was a, I guess, a poster contest.
Read Across America, yeah.
Yep, Read Across America. It was excellent. Mrs. Baps ran it over there, did a great job. We had a great turnout and always nice to go back home where my two boys went to Ben Franklin School. So no one's there though. Everyone's gone. But a great event. Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Yes, Chris?
Thank you, President Shi. Yes, teacher appreciation, we appreciate all of you. I think I speak for the board and everyone here. We appreciate all of you. And nurses, you said nurses was tomorrow, right? Their day was tomorrow. Like to extend that appreciation to the nurses for tomorrow as well. Also too, Dr. Alderelli. JP Stevens Boys Volleyball. The first time they won the white division. And this will be their first banner that they, they could hang in that gym. JP Stevens Boys Volleyball actually beat North Brunswick, secured the white division championship. And as the first banner that for, you know, for these boys, I'm very, very happy with them. Doc, I'm holding you to that banner. We got to get it up soon.
Got it.
Thank you.
Jerry, one last thing.
Yes.
Hey, Ralph. 66?
Yeah, I know, I'm a young kid.
My God.
You got shoes older than that.
Okay, any other board members? Okay, I just wanted to say congratulations to Nidia Wahi. And she was named 2025 to 2026 Edison Youth Poet Laureate. And Alexander Pooh and Shnidi Shapley came in second and third. These are the students who won the Edison Youth Poet Competition. Congratulations to all of them. You know, before we close the meeting, I just want everyone to remember. We talked a lot about the budget, okay? I'll say it one more time. The budget went up. Budget went up. Thank you. Now have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I second.
Okay, Ralph and Ronik. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.